Today is August seventeenth. We'd like to call to order Mayor Commission Workshop. And the time is ten oh one AM, I believe. Before we dive into this discussion, let me say a few words. Many of you probably heard me tell the story of my mother, teenage mom, unwed, had me when she was seventeen. One of the things she did is she took me to nursery school every day. And I'd start nursery school before, and then from nursery school, we would go to kindergarten class. I was the only African American in the entire nursery school. And there was a young girl there. Jane, I believe, was her name, and she wore a brace on her leg. And as my mother tells the story, I took a very strong liking to Jane. I was almost her protector. And my mother speculated, and as we've talked about it years later, that it probably was because Jane was different, I was different, and maybe I perceived Jane as somebody who needed my assistance, my help in matriculating through that nursery, nursery school kindergarten experience. I say that to say that, and as I grew up in church, I began hearing over and over that to whom much is given, much is required. And that's probably what has motivated me to continue in public service, helping others, reaching out to others, is probably in my DNA. And I don't think that I am any different commissioners from you. Your story may not be my story, but I know you have a story that has led you to this point in time, that has led you to throw your hat into the ring, to tell the citizens of West Palm Beach you want to help them. And so we share that value. It is not an accident that Kelly Schoeff, you are the president of the city commissioner at this point in time. It is not an accident that Corey Nearing, you are a city commissioner at this point in the city's history. It is not an accident, Joe Peduzzi, that you are a member of the city commission. It is not an accident, Christie Fox, that you too are serving at this time. I've heard this time in our history is a combination of nineteen eighteen, nineteen twenty-eight, and nineteen sixty-eight, all wrapped up in one. Nineteen eighteen being the last great pandemic that struck our country. Nineteen twenty-eight, of course, being the beginning of the Great Depression. And certainly nineteen sixty-eight being a period of tremendous social upheaval. And so it is not an accident that each of you find yourself here at this point in time. And I know that you are motivated by the desire to make our city a better city, to make our residents whole, our businesses strong. Each of you can probably hearken back to the night of your election or when your election, your, 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 your election to this commission became final. I know we have at least one gentleman here who was fortunate enough to go without an election, but I'm sure when it became official.
I, the budget workshop started.
Chris, mute yourself, please.
I will.
I'm sure when it became official, there was a feeling of tremendous elation, tremendous satisfaction, and probably it hit you that this is real. All that you would work for up to that point in time in terms of running for election, it probably hit you that, wow, I'm here. And maybe there is somewhat of the feeling of the dog who catches the car that he's been chasing all this time, now what do I do? But again, it is not an accident that you are here. I remember talking to each of you back in mid-March and asking you to work with me on the COVID nineteen response unit. And I remember the excitement, the enthusiasm that each and every one of you, without exception, had. Your willingness to roll up your shirt sleeves and to work on the task at hand for our citizens and for our businesses. So I know that you are here for such a time as this. You want what's best for our city, you want what's best for our citizens, you want what's best for our businesses, and you are not afraid of doing the hard work to get it done. Now, why am I talking about this at a budget workshop? Because, ladies and gentlemen, we still have work to do. The task is not yet complete. The devastation that has been wrought upon our city's finances has not been significant. And so I ask, as we enter into these discussions today, that you bring with you the attitude that motivated you to run for city commission in the first place, the attitude that you brought to the task of work on the COVID nineteen response unit. I ask that you think of the city as a whole and work with me to make the best for our decisions, because right now is when it's real. You may have thought that when it was official that you were a city commissioner, that it was real. Well, you know, it's easy to go to ribbon cuttings, it's easy to go to groundbreakings. But I know that each and every one of you did not run for office to just do the easy stuff. So now balancing a budget in the midst of a pandemic, it ain't easy. But I know that you, we are up to the task. So as we hear the numbers today, I ask that, again, you think big picture. You think of the scope of the challenges that's confronting this city at this point in time and that you make decisions that is for the betterment of our city. Because I know we will get to the other side of the mountain. West Palm Beach is uniquely positioned, and we probably, I predict, will not suffer from the ravages of COVID nineteen as long as other parts of the country will. But we need to get to the other side of the mountain, and it requires hard work beginning now. Now, some have suggested that perhaps my administration is unwilling or unable to present to you a balanced budget. That could not be further from the truth. We can, we have, and we will, present to you suggestions for balancing our budget. And I need you to approach today's task in the next few weeks with the mind toward doing what's best for the entire city of West Palm Beach. And I trust that you will do that, I know that you will do that. Thank you. Ms. Johnson, do you want to begin today's discussion, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Here in speak, let me pull up my power phone. Okay. Give me just a moment, please. Okay, let me start first again saying good morning to the members of the board, staff, as well as the public who may be tuned in to today's work session. And I want to thank everyone for their input, the various questions that I have received regarding the budget proposal. I want to just respond to some of the questions that I've received so that for those who did not ask the questions, you'll have the benefit of what was asked in my response so that there is no need to repeat the question. One of the questions that I have gotten from a number of, of, of sources is whether or not, as the city administrator, before putting together the budget proposal, did I do a review of the city's prior financial history to determine how we got to this point? And the answer to that question is no. I would ask those who asked me that question to take a couple of points into context. I have been your city administrator for seven months. And in that seven-month period, the city has had major challenges that dictated my time, first and foremost. Secondly, if time would have permitted, I don't think that it is a good use of my time to go back and review history and how we got to this point for the simple reason that it's not going to give me any additional funding to bring to the table to solve our budget challenge facing us at this moment. I do believe strongly that understanding history is very important, particularly if there are lessons that will help us prevent any previous sins in terms of how we've handled the budget. But I look at it in the context of the city's annual audit, which has not found any wrongdoings. And I don't think that me as the city administrator could do any better job than what the annual audit all these many of years have revealed in terms of the city's financial situation. Another repeated question that I have also gotten is whether or not I took the time to do an analysis of each department and determine that they're operating as efficiently as they can. And again, the answer to that question is no. We have been in the midst of a pandemic. We didn't have a game plan like all other municipalities on how you operate with the pandemic. So we put together a game plan, and I think we did that very well. So again, no, I did not do that type of analysis. With that being said, what I would like to say is that there is no proposal that I can put together under our current circumstances that is going to make everyone happy. There is no proposal that I can put together that is going to satisfy everyone. So I think we all need to manage our expectation. We have a real ten million dollar budget deficit. And without any additional revenue, that means that there are going to have to be some very tough calls here with cuts and reductions. So there is no plan that I can put together with the mayor and the commissioner's support that is going to satisfy everyone, and I need that to be understood. Every decision that we make with this budget is going to come with some pain. I wish that were not the case, but that is the reality at which we find ourselves. And with that, I'm going to start in. So for today, what we're going to have as part of this work session is a recap of the fiscal year twenty-one, which starts October first, preliminary general fund operating budget, a review of the changes that have occurred since the board heard that presentation at its August tenth, two thousand twenty meeting. And that presentation was given by the city's chief financial officer, Mr. Parks. At the board's pleasure, there would be an update or a presentation on reduction plans from the various department directors. Then we're going to be looking for board direction on funding options. And then I would like to have a discussion with the board to get direction on union negotiations. So our budget realities, as we stand today. We have significant revenue losses. Part of those losses come from the impact of COVID nineteen, and the other part comes from an impact due to market contractions that are happening with various sources. We have significant operating increases that we are obligated to cover for this upcoming fiscal year. And there is no way of getting around that. We have to pay the health insurance, our liability insurance, we have to pay the pension costs, we have to pay the retirement payouts, we have to pay the increased costs in legally binding contracts. We have to pay our utilities. And the board has approved the submittal and acceptance of a COPPS grant that comes with a grant match, and we have to cover that. The other factor that happens to be occurring at the same time is the fact that we have four union contracts that expire September thirtieth, two thousand twenty. So we are in the midst of negotiations with four union contracts. That includes I A F F, P V A, S E I U, and P M S A. In terms of the options for balancing the FY twenty-one general fund operating budget, what the board has said is that in terms of increasing revenue to help with the ten million dollar deficit, that there will be no property tax increase, that we are going to stay with the existing milit rate, which brings in that seven point seven million dollars of additional revenue. The board has said that you all are not going to support an increase in the various other fees. So we don't have any other additional revenue that I can add to the mix of closing that operating gap. In terms of the use of reserves, given that we have four plus million in one-time capital cost, the board has said that it would support funding those items out of unassigned fund balance. The board has not yet weighed in on using fund balance for operating increases, and that is a practice that I don't think is a good idea. But depending on where the board ends up in terms of what you will and won't support, we may have to look at that option. Realizing the expenditures to deal with or address that ten million dollar gap, the board has indicated support for the cost shifts, reallocating our expenditures, meaning taking all of the discretionary items out of the budget, and that is in your material and service costs, doing the various cost shifts that have been articulated. The board has expressed support for that. Personnel cuts, I think that still is a question. It is imperative that everyone understands, once you reduce your material and service costs of all of the discretionary items, and given the fact that the lion's share of our general fund budget, as is typically the case with municipal budgets, is in personnel. Our budget personnel represents about sixty-seven percent. So when you take out all of the discretionary items and you still have a gap, it's going to hit personnel unless we're going to use one-time money, fund balance, to cover that gap and not do cuts or reductions. And again, I don't, in theory, support using fund balance money to cover ongoing costs, but that certainly is at the board's discretion. So in terms of where we are, you've seen these numbers before. In terms of our operating revenue and the operating expenses, I talked about the one-time capital funds, four point six million, that's really five million dollars rounded. We talked about the police and fire overtime increase of about two point six million, which would bring us to that two hundred and seven point five million. And what I have not presented to the board is the new budget request. Again, that's one of the questions that I have consistently gotten. Whether or not the ten million dollar gap includes new items from departments, that answer is no. The department submitted what we call budget issues, same thing as wish lists, of four point six million dollars. I did not bring those items into the budget discussion because of the fact, from my perspective, if we are not in a position to address all of our legally obligated increases, I don't think that it is feasible to spend our time on new budget requests that we're not even in a position to consider. So the board never saw those items, but certainly the board can have a list of those items if you so desire. The other issue is the vacancy allowance of the four point two million. I directed departments at the time that they submitted their base budgets to reduce their base budgets by four point two million to get us to a point where their budgets are submitted either flat or balanced. Had they loaded in that four point two million dollars, that would have added to the ten million dollar gap, meaning we would then be talking about a fourteen million dollars gap if we did not require them to reduce that. And that came with some pain. I'm going to use the police department as an example, because they were one of the departments, and they probably were hit the hardest with the vacancy allowance concept that we have utilized. Their vacancy allowance portion of that four point two million was about one point two million. One of the areas that Chief Adely and Chief Morris have focused on is filling all of the vacant positions, and they accomplished that. So they need to have full funding in their personnel budget. That put their budget out the gate of one point two million but for the direction that they had to find reductions in material and services. Their budget is so tight, the only area where they could make that one point two million dollar reduction was in overtime. Now, I fully expect that they're going to come back at the end of the year, or some point during the year, and need to have additional money for overtime. But the general fund budget could not sustain an additional one point two million dollar increase. Looking at all of those totals that would have given us the two hundred and sixteen million plus union negotiations that are out there, that we have to make a decision from a policy standpoint, what are we going to do by union negotiations? When I take that two point six million and back out the one hundred and ninety-one million in revenue, we would have been talking about a gap of twenty-five million. But again, because of the fact that a number of these items were simply not in a position to include in the budget, I felt it was not prudent to start out work session discussions on this budget with a twenty-five million dollar gap, take the various actions that the board has supported, take the various action with requiring departments to reduce their budgets on the front end, and then get down to what is the real gap that the board has to deal with in terms of balancing our budget. And again, that's a ten million dollar number that we've been talking about, a nine point nine six million. So in terms of these items, it is important that the public understand these are not items that the city has any discretion to not cover. By detail, the items include a health insurance plan increase of five point four percent, and I didn't dial in the dollar numbers, but all total is that nine point nine six million dollars. We have increases in our health insurance liability claims. We have increases in workman's compensation, general and auto liability insurance. We have a contractual obligation with the Pioneer Park. We have escalations built into the vendor contracts, the board approved staff career progressions that were left out of the budget that we have to now fund. We have the transfer of fifteen firefighter salary costs and benefits because of the expiration of the SAFRA grant. And we signed a legally binding agreement that at the end of the three-year period, the city will pick up their salary for those fifteen firefighters, and we have to honor that. We have increases in the police pension. We have payouts for both police and fire that we absolutely have to honor. We have increases in water and utilities. And then back some time ago, the board approved the submittal of a COPPS grant, accepted and executed the grant agreement. That's about a one point eight million dollar increase in the budget for twenty-one police officers. So these are items, these are not wish list items, these are not wants. These are things that we absolutely have to do, and I need to underscore that point. So in terms of what the board has indicated through these work sessions, is that they want to have the preliminary budget to include and cover the obligated expenditures. That would be the nine point nine six million, and to the extent financially feasible to cover the other items. But therein lies the crux of the challenge that we are facing. We don't have enough funding without additional revenue to cover those various items to the level that is perhaps preferred. You have competing priorities, you have competing demands. And when you have that sort of a situation, tough decisions are gonna have to be made. So by way of the methodology, we've walked through that, and I won't go through that again. So with the two point six million in overtime increases above and beyond what is in police and fire budget, we set that to the side. The four point six million in capital, the board supported funding that out of the unassigned fund balance. And as Mr. Parks' presentation indicated, we have twelve point one million based on the capra for nineteen of unassigned fund balance. When the appropriate time comes, we will come back to the board with each of those items for approval. And I don't want the board to lose sight of the fact that as part of Mr. Parks' presentation, he indicated that we have about ten point seven million in carry-forward items that potentially would have, the sum of it would have to come out of that twelve point one million. We don't expect that all ten point seven million, but there is a portion of it that would also have to come out of unassigned fund balance. So when you think of those items collectively, you get an understanding of how the potential impact The potential impact to our unassigned fund balance may be. And how it may reduce that twelve point one million to a much lower number. But that remains to be seen.
Ms. Johnson, before you move off of that slide, I have a question from Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Administrator. I wanted to kind of take a look at the capital, the four point six capital and the carry forward items of ten point seven. As I recall, that discussion was about FY twenty and about having revenues that didn't. Come in due to COVID in FY twenty. So we were looking at what the shortfall would be because again, when we did FY twenty budget. We projected revenues out and those revenues were impacted by COVID, so they were significantly reduced. Can, and Mayor, at your discretion, either during this talk or a further session. Drill down on that unassigned fund balance because as I recall, having that discussion, we were looking at. At the end of the day, around two million dollars or so that may have to come out of. The unassigned fund balance. But looking forward at ten point seven million dollars of carry forward items. You know, I think it should involve a discussion of what of those items can be put on pause. What is going to need to be carried forward and really looking because that, that's a big number. And it's, you know, I think something that we should take a closer look at.
If I can respond, Mayor. And I, I don't have the PowerPoint in front of me, Commissioner Shou, you are correct. In that that discussion included one component of what. Gap we may have this year between the savings from. The freeze on travel, training and underspending expenditures. And the revenue loss for this year, so there is a gap. However, the carry fold of the ten point seven million also related to this year. That is not for next year. There were items in this year's budget that were carried forward. And the funding from those items in this current year, not FY twenty-one, this current year. The funding for those items would be from the twelve million in unassigned fund balance. But certainly we can come back and Mr. Parks and the Budget Manager. And myself, we can walk through all of those in detail, but that is for this year, not for fiscal year twenty-one.
Yes, Mayor, if we could really set that aside and have a separate discussion on that, I think that's a really important discussion to have. Again, understanding we've talked about it once, but I think really drilling down and understanding we've got a lot of different numbers coming. At us here, if we could take a look at those items and make sure that we are triaging them appropriately.
No, that's fine. I think the focus for today and as Ms. Johnson will get deeper into her. Presentation is figuring the path forward with respect to the budget as a whole. And we can certainly take another look and have a conversation as to what's going on with this unassigned fund balance.
Yes, and I will dial that, I will dial that discussion into the work session. Here within the next couple of weeks so that we don't lose sight of it.
All right, continue, Ms. Johnson.
So the thrust of what we need to grapple with here is that nine point nine six. Million dollar operating gap for fiscal year twenty-one. At the August tenth City Commission meeting, Mr. Parks walked through the preliminary budget. And so some of these. This presentation includes some of those items. It's in a different format, his presentation sort of laid it out. In terms of what was loaded into the budget and then walked through the four largest department. So I have kind of wrapped this up in summary to just kind of highlight what was in that budget. That was presented on August tenth. It did include cuts in material services, so it absolutely is reducing. That particular category of funding to the tune of about two point four million. We included the call shifts out of the general fund to the tune of about three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. Then the elimination of vacant positions to the tune of about two point eight million. I had questions about what departments were affected. So we looked at this first category where we had eight positions that were cut. And that was in parks, HR and public works. And then we had another six vacant positions that were cut from departments. And that was in legal, the library, and again, in public works. That preliminary budget presentation included the elimination of the police cadets. For the, in the amount of about fifty-four thousand. In terms of elimination of field positions, that determination is pending. However, it does relate to the proposal for parks and library. Part, another one of the strategies was salary freezing, salary freezes, excuse me, and furloughs. And the intent was to have a tiered plan. This component of the budget was still pending determination. If we were to move forward with it, some of the impacted positions would be. Your city administrator and assistant city administrators, the department directors to include your police and fire chiefs. As well as the division managers. So you're looking at the top tier positions within the organizations. And this last component is where it has generated the most concern. That preliminary budget proposal that the board heard included a three point six million dollar reduction. Between the library and parks and recreation. In terms of the libraries component, that's about one point five million. That translates into twenty point five FTEs and then twelve on-call positions. In terms of the park, parks and recreation component. That relates to about two point two million rounded with thirty-six point twenty-five FTEs. And again, when you look at cutting positions. You're also going to have an impact on services or programs that would no longer be provided. And we're going to hear the presentation from our library director and parks director. On what those programs and service impacts would be. So in terms of the salary freezes and furloughs. Some of the things that I did look at was how our salary structure is laid out. And as the spreadsheet reflects, if we look at the top tier salary here within our organization. That would be my salary as the city administrator. So if we were looking at a five percent cut or a ten percent cut, that's what it translates into. And then when we look at the salary category between a hundred and fifty and the one ninety-nine, we have nineteen employees. And you see what the two respective salary cuts would look like. And then it just goes down from there in tiers. Here is where I want the board to really take note to. Where we have the lion's share of the general fund employees that are making. You know, under fifty thousand dollars. So if the board were supportive of doing a five percent pay cut or a ten percent pay cut. That's what it would be on average for employees within those categories. As part of the component for salary freezing and furloughs. Based on this information, I did not include as part of that proposal. That we go this far in the organization, although we're talking furlough numbers. Because a salary cut of five percent. Could make the difference on whether or not employees are able to. Pay a light bill or water bill or put food on the table. And from my perspective, if we're going to get to these kinds of options that we have to consider. I look at it from the perspective of when we look at the leadership compensation of the city. The leaders in the city should bear the brunt of the contribution. This just lists out some of the positions that would be included in the various categories. So in terms of furloughs, we just looked at, you know, what it would translate into. We're looking at one day or if we look at twenty-six days. If one of the options that the board wants to be included in terms of finding money to balance the budget. If we look at twenty-six days across the board, what that translates into. A savings of about one point two million dollars. And then this particular one looks at all of the classifications within the organization. Again, that certainly is a much higher dollar amount if we're looking at the twenty-six day scenario as well as the one day. But again, because of employees at the lower end of the pay scale. You know, my recommendation would be that we not impose across the board furloughs. Because of the financial detrimental effect that it would have on employees in those various categories. But again, that is a policy decision of the board. So in terms of where we are based on the proposal that the board heard on August tenth and updating the numbers. We have a gap of a hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty thousand. So this is Plan A and this is still the plan that I am recommending that the board supports. Pointing out the fact that it does include that three point six million dollar reduction to parks and library combined. It does include the three percent COLA and five percent STEP plan. In that, in my opinion, in my humble opinion. I think that it behooves the city to at least look at funding the STEP pay. For police and fire, given that fire right now in terms of its market placement. It's eighteenth in the market and police is thirteenth in the market. So if the board were to support this plan, the hundred and forty-three thousand would be closed. Through back and out of the three percent COLA. The COLA for management one and two. And that represents about two hundred and seventy-six thousand. So based on the plan that was presented to the board. And I know some of this gets lost in translation because budget is just doing it on the numbers and how it's loaded into the system. We have a balanced budget right now as we stand. If the board were inclined to go with option A. With the salary increase for management one and two. Backed out of this three percent and that represents about one point two million of the two point eight for the STEP pay. The FY twenty-one budget is balanced. Again, if the board were to support that plan. We will present a balanced budget to you at your August twenty-fourth City Commission meeting. That is coming up this Monday. However, based on feedback that I have heard from the commissioners whom have weighed in. I did look at a Plan B, an alternate plan. So based on that, again, that's one ninety-one million is our operating revenue. If we look at our operating expenses. I got to get my heart, because that's covering up my numbers, bear with me. So if we look at the operating expenses of the hundred and ninety-two million, two forty-eight, six eighty-seven. If we back out the three percent COLA and five percent STEP pay. Because that is in the union contracts and the board deal with that as part of union negotiations. That brings us down to a hundred and eighty-nine million, fifty-six thousand, a hundred and forty-one. And then we add back in the three point six million for a reduction for parks and library. If we put that funding back into the budget, based on the feedback from the board. With concerns about that thirty percent reduction. Then that gives us the operating expenses of a hundred and ninety-two million, twenty-six thousand, four ninety-nine. We would then have a gap between our operating revenue and our operating expenses. Of nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two. The options that I would recommend that we look at would be across the board personnel reductions. Or an across-the-board salary cut, across-the-board furloughs, or you look at fund balance. And that is an option, however, as I've said, is one that would not. I think is feasible for us to fund operating costs with one-time money. My recommendation on that would be that we look at. Then doing an across-the-board personnel cut. With the exclusion of the police department and fire department. So if we did an across-the-board five percent personnel cut. From the general fund departments, that would be one point four million dollars. And so you would have the variance between that one point four and the nine hundred and twenty-one, that four hundred some odd thousand. Variance. I think that the additional four hundred some odd thousand dollars would be needed. In that, just looking at some of the cuts that have been made to material services. I am very concerned that not only have we cut to the bone, that we have cut into the bone. And we're going to need to restore some of those cuts back into personnel service. Professional services or operating expenses because departments have to have operating supplies. We have to be able to have the supplies to run the departments. So I am concerned at this point that we have cut perhaps too deep into material services. In an effort to balance this budget. So if the board were to go with option B. Understanding that there is absolutely no funding in option B. For the three percent COLA or the five percent STEP pay. We will bring a balanced budget to the board at your August twenty-fourth meeting. Which is this upcoming Monday. I want to underscore whether the board supports option A. Which includes that three point six million dollar reduction to parks and recreation. But provides for the continuation of the COLA and STEP pay. We're going to present a balanced budget come Monday. Whether the board supports option B, which excludes the three percent COLA. The five percent STEP pay include a five percent across-the-board reduction. We're going to present a balanced budget come Monday at your August twenty-fourth City Commission meeting. So the direction that I'm looking for from the board. On what do you prefer your balanced budget that we will present on Monday to reflect? Is your preference for it to reflect the thirty percent reduction? To parks and recreation and the library as is included in option A? And that will be the balanced budget that we present on Monday? Or is it your preference that it not include that thirty percent reduction? But includes the five percent across-the-board reduction, which will have service impacts? The directors are ready to present what their impacts will be. As part of this presentation, because it's important for the board to understand. That with every cut in personnel, there is going to be a service impact. There's going to be a reduction of some service or program. While we're talking about some of the general government operations, it's going to be an impact on efficiency. Also, whether there are specific items. Also, whether there are specific items that the board has identified that should not be in the proposed or the budget that is presented on Monday. And whether or not there are specific items that the board wants to absolutely have retained in the budget. At the end of the day, depending on the direction from this work session, Administration and Finance will finalize the balanced budget and gear up for the presentation of the proposed budget on Monday at your August twenty-fourth City Commission meeting. So at this point, I will pause so that we can have a discussion from the board on your preference. If you want to just go to the presentations now from the departments, we can do that. But before the work session ends, we need to get direction from the board on where the board sits as it relates to union negotiations. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
All right, Ms. Johnson, we do have a couple of questions, beginning with Commissioner Nearing.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for your presentation. So I have a page full of notes. I'll try and as best I can be succinct. So I think first off, having heard the two options and only had obviously five minutes to process Option Two, I would definitely be in favor of Plan B or Option Two in terms of what could possibly be brought forward to the commission. I think when I think about our budget, and we talked about this, I think the pain points are and should be shared as best as possible across the entire City Commission. So much so that I would, Commissioner President, if you were so inclined to, you know, as a part of the commission budget, I know our discretionary funds are, I think, approximately seventy-five hundred dollars. That's six commissioners. That's forty-five thousand dollars. I would, and maybe Monday we can discuss it further. But I would say that we look to the commission budget as well so that again, that these pain points are spread across the entire city. One of the things that I that I saw in the budget was the elimination of the Police Cadet Program. And I realized that in a budget like this, every dollar counts. And in looking at different avenues is the way ultimately you coalesce these dollars and you meet the delta, if you will. I do believe that is a de minimis amount, fifty-three thousand dollars to eliminate that cadet program considering, for as long as I have been on the commission, one of the issues that we have had is around recruiting police officers. And I don't necessarily want to get into all the details of that. I would just say, I don't know if that's, I would assume is coming directly from our Police Department. And obviously, I will support it. That is the direction they have asked us to move in. I will support that. But I've just seen over the years how important that particular program has been to the city and in particular to our Police Department. And again, I see it as a de minimis amount in our overall budget. I too agree that the, and don't support using a one-time fund balance to cover costs. I think across the board cuts are, I think, unfortunately, the way to go given the options. Again, I'll just, you know, kind of be overstated in this. I think it's really important that those pain points be spread across. And so I will definitely, you know, again, I'll dig into it a little bit more. But based on how it's been presented and what I've seen in the last five minutes, would be very supportive. There is an operative word. I would be supportive of Option B versus Option A, which included, I'll just say what I think our draconian cuts to our Parks and Reg and Library. So not a question, just I guess just a comment more than anything. So those are my comments.
I would, and thank you for those comments. I would refrain from making any decisions versus Option A versus Option B until we hear from what programs will be adversely affected by the cuts in Option B. We're looking at numbers now, but as was alluded to earlier, when you talk about cuts to personnel, it's going to have an impact on programs. And I think to compare apples to apples, we need to see the impact, the programmatic impact. So, but I appreciate your comments. And obviously, there'll be an opportunity to hear from department heads and to respond to that. Commissioner Peduzzi, you have a question and a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in agreement with Commissioner Nearing on much of what his comments touched on. You know, with the exception, I think, so I'd be more in favor of Plan B as it stands at this point without hearing anything with regard to the specific departments, with the exception of the five percent STEP. I think that the three percent COLA, we definitely need to look at eliminating. Obviously, I think this is a tough, you know, it's a tough position we're in here. It's not going to be fun, no matter what, you know, no matter what way we decide to go here. I feel like we're getting into the weeds and we're about to get into the weeds even deeper hearing from each of the departments. And it's something that Ms. Johnson said at the beginning kind of stood out to me that that, and please, I'm not putting anyone on the spot or, or you know, I don't want anyone to get defensive, but she had mentioned that she hadn't taken a look at the individual departments and gotten into the weeds with the individual departments, you know, to look at, you know, cost savings. I understand that, you know, we're in a, we're in an odd time here, a tough time here right now with everything that's happened and time is at a premium. And I understand that. That's why I had previously suggested maybe we just bring in someone that can help us in that endeavor and take a look at each of the departments and help us, you know, identify areas of potential cost savings. And I think we're going to, you know, hear from the departments in a few minutes, and I look forward to that. At this point, though, I think that we do need to have some across-the-board cuts and avoid, you know, decimating any single department. But I really think that in order to see the big picture, if we could, you know, really have a comprehensive look at each department and figure out how to save costs within each of those departments without having major impacts on this, you know, on the delivery of services. That's where I am right now. I have a whole bunch of other suggestions. I'm not even sure that now is the right time to get into them. I'm just looking at my notes here. I'm sure there'll be other opportunity. When we talk about furloughs, you know, I was talking with a former commissioner, Commissioner Moffett, about this, and she suggested something I hadn't thought of. Is it possible to put out there to our employees the potential for a voluntary furlough, maybe a family, you know, families that were one spouse or one partner and the family works for the city and another has a job elsewhere where maybe, you know, they might need the time for helping their kids with virtual schooling, that maybe they'd actually voluntarily be willing to take a furlough of several months or longer with the expectation that their job would be waiting for them when they came back. I don't know how, whether that would be something that would be of an interest to any of our employees, but it's just might be a way of having the opportunity for a voluntary furlough as opposed to mandatory, mandatory across-the-board furloughs. I have a few other ideas, but I'll save them.
Mayor, if I can respond, on the, on the idea about the voluntary furloughs, that suggestion has come up, and in fact, I think Armando brought that suggestion to my attention separate and apart from it being submitted through the suggestion box for employees. And that is something that we certainly are going to consider. However, that is not something that we dial into balancing the budget because it's voluntary. Employees have the discretion to then change their mind. So if you balance your budget on a voluntary furlough and then they change their mind, you know, that's problematic. But certainly, we're going to consider that. And where it is permissible, that is something we would move forward with. On the idea of the departments and looking at cost savings, while I, as the city administrator, have not done that, here's what I would ask the board to keep in mind as you think through this. As part of the reductions to material services, those were done across the board. I think with the cuts that have been made in material and services across the board, the departments across the board are so lean to the point that cause that sometime during the middle of the fiscal year, we may have to come back to the board to ask for one-time funding to restore some money that we need for some things in professional services or in operating supplies. So if you look at the potential of someone coming in, and I'm always open to someone else coming in and taking a look at it, as long as it's going to be beneficial. If across the board, all of your discretionary money has been taken out of the budget, then essentially, what you would have someone come in to look at would be your personnel and give you an idea of what you should take out of your personnel complement. And again, I don't know that, you know, but again, that's a policy decision of the board. That's not one that, as your administrator, I think would serve us well in terms of paying for that. But certainly, it's something that the board would have done.
Ms. Johnson, if I could add to that, please. And I know myself, and I'm sure Ricardo as well, we've sat down with all of the department directors and gone through their budget, I mean, some cases line item by line item. And we have found some efficiencies and cut a lot of things out of materials and services, some of which we found weren't needed. But we are, as Administrator Johnson said, we are down basically to the bone right now with departments that, at least that I've gone through. There's just not much left in savings there.
And then on, I think Commissioner Peduzzi make a good point about, you know, perhaps the board getting into the weeds with hearing the presentation from the departments. And that again is at the board discretion on whether you want to hear that. I have that dialed into today's work session because if it is the pleasure of the board to go with Option B, I think it's important that the board has an understanding of what programs or services will be impacted so that when your constituents start calling about a particular program not being funded or not being available, the board will have an understanding that that was cut as part of the plan that is the preference of the board.
All right. Mr. Parks, you want to weigh in on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add to this. I would like to assure Commissioner Peduzzi. Ms. Johnson does have a lot of duties, but we also have a finance department that is engaged every day and all day reviewing our finances, reviewing our departments, reviewing efficiencies and doing all of those things. So we're not just, you know, watching a bunch of numbers flow by. We are doing that analysis and that would come in the results that some of these savings that you, that you've seen have come out of the result of us talking to and working with departments. So it's, it's not being overlooked. I just want to make sure that nobody thinks that, you know, no one's looking at things and watching things go by.
Thank you for that footnote, Mr. Parks.
All right. Commissioner Lambert, you had a question, comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Administrator Johnson. Appreciate the thorough presentation. I have a few comments and a question. I did want to comment on your recent statement. I am in favor of hearing the department presentations. I think that that will be very beneficial, and I appreciate you thinking about that we will get questions as we already are from the residents in the city. Another comment that was made earlier, I think it was Commissioner Nearing, who made a comment about just seeing Option B here today and being asked, you know, to make a decision on that. And, you know, as I was reviewing all of the presentations, I went on YouTube and I watched some of the videos again of the presentations this weekend. I did find that I was picking up on some things that in the moment, you know, didn't, didn't fully register. And I was wondering if, you know, in the future, if it's, you know, even just a few hours ahead of time, but, you know, preferably, it would be a day or so ahead of time. If we could get the PowerPoint, I think when we're discussing heavy things such as this budget and the balancing of it, that would be very helpful. So to the Option A and B, I am definitely not in favor of cutting at such drastic measures to the library and the parks. I am, and so that was an Option A. And then in Option B, I am in favor of taking a look at eliminating the five percent cost of living. I think that that is a very difficult message to deliver that here we're cutting and laying off while we're giving cost of living salary increases at the same time. So my question is, and I really don't mean this to be funny, but did we consider an Option C? Is there some sort of nuanced way to approach this that is not, you know, just cut and dry across the board one way or the other? And I'm sure the answer is yes. And so I would want to hear from you on that. And my third comment is about the discussion about the commissioner budget. I think President, so correct me if I'm wrong, I think you said that you were going to work with administration on looking at areas within our budget to cut, and I would be in favor of that as well. Thank you.
I thank you. On the nuance here with the three percent and five percent. So the five percent is the STEP pay for PBA and FIRE. We are in the midst of negotiations. So in terms of what is included in the budget, it is the amount that represents the continuation of that. The three percent represents a combination of what's in the union contract for PMSA and SEIU, which is part of that one point two million dollars. What is also part of the budget plan is to not include the management category level one and two employees whose three percent is part of that one point two million. To not include that salary increase if you are in management category one or management category two. So that's the nuance on the three percent. On the five percent, it is part of union negotiations. It's for the continuation of the five percent STEP plan.
All right. Now, Madam President, you had a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First, putting on my president hat, I wanted to let the other commissioners know that I have been looking at our budget. Specifically, we have items in materials and services, video equipment subscriptions, travel reimbursements, et cetera. So I'm working with staff here and I'll be visiting with our administrative staff to make sure that we keep those line items that we are contractually required to, but also reduce. So I encourage you to make sure that you check with administrative staff. You know, we're following suit with all other departments of reduction of travel, reduction of unnecessary expenses. And to Commissioner Nearing's point, we will look at the discretionary funds as well. Really trying to skinny this budget down to a place where we are at need-to-haves. And I think that takes me into my discussion of the budget at large. As I looked at some of the items that we have, for instance, we've had a video equipment line on our budget for years. And I know Commissioner Lambert addressed this last year. That line item has shown on our budget year after year with no money spent to it. So it's tied up two thousand dollars within our budget. It's a small line item, but when I look at this across other departments, I think that's kind of the theme of what I'm hearing from other commissioners is have we removed all of those items that have been placeholders that we found that we haven't really been using to make sure that we skinny down into the least amounts of materials and services? Um, there is one thing that I think I see as the theme across all of this and, and one thing that I am supportive of, and that is shared impact. I am, um, absolutely not in favor of option A. Um, I think I've made my, my comments fairly clear throughout this that, that there are residents and specifically residents. Within the north end district and within the, the lower income levels of our residents that will be highly affected. And those aren't, those aren't measures that I can support. When we're looking at, um, shared impact, which I think is the theme of option B. And again, having the, the limited time to digest, I can't say I'm, I'm a hundred percent one way or the other. But I am in favor of looking at shared impact. But the one thing I want to address here, which I think is the huge elephant in the room, is that this budget does not account for all expenses. When we're going to move into this conversation about union negotiations. You know, it's, it's an unfortunate sense of timing that union negotiations are done every three years and this happens to be the year. If this were another year, we would already have that contract and those contractual obligations baked in. As we do with the other, uh, approximately 10 million that Administrator Johnson had, had specified. So I guess to, to that extent, I wanted to express what, what my, um, general themes were. And that would be to make sure that we are looking at a budget that has all expenses. Um, all expenses included in it, as well as the maximum amounts of jobs that can be retained. And so, uh, I, I would like to try to look at something that doesn't eliminate staff positions so much as look at a furlough plan. Um, so that we can reduce, I understand reducing personnel costs. But I'm looking at that, that $50,000 and below employee number. And those may be the sole breadwinners within their households. They, they are the ones that need to have that rent money to make sure that, that they don't, um, you know, completely become devastated by this. And, and I want to have that responsibility to try to maintain those jobs. So, um, I know it's not an easy job administrator, department heads. I too, um, actually asked the administrator to have department heads come and present to us. Um, one of the things that's difficult here, um, and it's just a nuance of how the system works. But, you know, under the strong mayor's system, mayor's is managing administration. And commission is charged with, um, divying out those finances, which is a really difficult position to be in. If we are not communicating with department heads and knowing what their needs are. So to the extent that they can express those in this forum, I think is very helpful to this commissioner. To help to, um, determine what needs and, and programs are there. So, um, just some general comments there about what I see as the priorities. And that is making sure that we have all expenses accounted for, um, saving as many jobs and, and programs as we can. Um, and, uh, working through this difficult decision in a, in a collaborative way, so I appreciate that as well.
Commissioner, when you say all expenses accounted for, do you mean you want to see a budget that includes the results of the union negotiations in it?
I, I think it's relevant to the budget that we're discussing, right now we're trying to balance a budget. Um, to a place where we don't have all expenses accounted for. So you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that, the, the contract negotiations would fall into this budget. And if, if any adjustments needed to be made, then it would, it would affect what our balance is here.
Well, that's the whole point of having, uh, I guess, item three on here or, which is getting some direction on union negotiations. Because the discussion we're having now allows us, or it tells us what kind of money, if any, we have available. Uh, so we, we, before we leave today, we will have a discussion with you all. As to what you had in mind with respect to, uh, union negotiations. Uh, but we didn't leave it out because we forgot about it, we know it's, it's a need. But we need some direction, uh, because the discussion you're having as to the approach we take. To balancing at least this portion of the budget will tell us what flexibility we have when it comes to negotiations which are ongoing. So, uh, we, we, we will address that. Uh, Commissioner, you had a follow-up?
I did, thank you, uh, this, this is really in line with Commissioner Lambert's, uh, point about. The possibility or, or Plan C. And one of the things that I would be supportive of is in, in Plan B, it looks like we, we, we sort of go from Plan A. To Plan B, zero to a hundred with regards to library and, um, parks and rec. And I think again, when I present this theme of kind of these shared pain points, that means parks and recs and library as well. So I think to some degree, we should be talking about, um, what possible cuts look like in those departments. I just was not in favor of a thirty or thirty-three, whatever the numbers were. So again, I don't know if that could be baked into either B or if, uh, if we're talking about eventually just a. Uh, another option altogether, but it looked to me as if, um, in option or Plan B. That we were saying that parks and rec, and maybe I'm wrong, uh, Commissioner, um, Johnson, I'm sorry, um, Administrator Johnson. Maybe it looked like we were saying that parks and rec and library all of a sudden go from thirty-three percent to zero. And that's, that's definitely, okay, all right.
Yeah, um, you know, and I apologize if I didn't make that clear. When you say in across the board, five percent, that includes parks and recs. So they would go from the thirty percent reduction to the five percent, they absolutely would be included.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah, they absolutely would be included.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, uh, Ms. McDermott, are you trying to get the mayor's attention? You, you're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, all right, um, so I did want to make a comment to let you know because, um, looking at the budget day in and day out. I am working with the department heads. But again, like Ms. Johnson said, last year, we did a lot of cuts to materials and service. To come to a balanced budget without impacting the personnel. So it does make it a lot harder this year to find those cuts in materials. But departments have come in, they've done different methods of trying to deliver services without having a net impact. Uh, they have found efficiencies. I want to tell you that I've spoken with the department heads even more, even working from home than any other year. So I want everybody to please have a comfort zone in knowing that we have worked with the departments to get down to these numbers. And because we are so heavy with personnel as every other government is. We're just trying to find those cuts that are still going to deliver the services that everybody, um, enjoys. But doing it, they are the ones in tune with how to do it. And I, I really do feel they've actually gone to their employees, employees have had wonderful, um, comments. Uh, so I, I do want you to feel a comfort zone that we totally have worked with the departments. We've brought it to administration and we're working on different methodologies to come up with the balanced budget. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Fox, you had a comment?
Thank you, first, I want to apologize, my video keeps going in and out, so I can see and hear everybody, but I'm sorry that I can't turn my video on. But, um, I want to thank you, you know, for coming up with a Plan B. Because I think, um, as has been said here, um, by the other commissioners, I am not comfortable at all with our Plan A. I think we need to look at ways that we can have, you know, shared pain throughout the city. And I am also, you know, in favor of looking at the, uh, commission budget. But as, um, President Shof mentioned, you know, specifically about the video production in our budget, for example. I don't know what the rest of the budget looks like, I, you know, we have been provided with. A few department budgets, but not the entire city. So I feel like I'm making decisions a bit in a vacuum by not knowing if there's, you know, a video production in every single. You know, department budget that we could be looking at. Um, so I would really like to be able to see, you know, what last year's budget looked like, what this proposed budget looked like citywide. I mean, I'm happy to just take the whole budget and go line by line, just so I can have a better understanding if that's possible. Um, and I also just wanted to mention, you know, for me, I, I want to prioritize the people in our city over, you know, the things in our city. And I think the programs we keep talking about that are so fantastic, um, you know, at the library and the parks and rec. It's the people that are running those programs that are making the, the programs so fantastic, it's not just the programs themselves. So, you know, I, you know, want to look at prioritizing people. And to that point, I wondered if there was any more discussion that we could have about, you know, some of the things I, and I think all the commissioners were able to see the email. That I sent to, um, Administrator Johnson. But, you know, for example, I think one of the, the quickest things that we could do was looking at working with developers who maybe have been facing challenges due to COVID. You know, with the ways that people are traveling differently and, and living and working differently and working with those developers. I mean, I'm specifically thinking of the Quadroboil buildings, but there might be others that I don't know of that, you know. Other cities have education funds, like we could have a parks, a park and library support fund for, you know. The developers could be paying into, um, you know, if they were changing the way that their, their use was. And I think that's something that we could do really immediately, that could be a revenue generator. Likewise, some of the other things that, you know, I've looked at what other cities have, um, done in the past. Um, in terms of like advertising in their garages, it's not something we do now. But I think the next few years, not just this year, we're going to have some really challenging times. And so I wonder if, you know, there might be other things that we could look out at, that are not as immediate to change. But that, um, for future years, you know, like putting advertising in the garage. Um, or, you know, naming rights of other things, just, you know, just to talk it out and see what, um. It, you know, there, I know there might be ordinances in place for some of those things. But, you know, just that if there's other revenue generators that we're not looking at, that, you know, do not involve raising taxes. And do not involve, you know, massive layoffs, so that we could just start prior and see, you know, what other options might be out there.
Uh, Commissioner Fox, uh, in addition to the ideas and suggestions from you, which were good ideas. Now, we have received a number of good ideas and suggestions from staff. However, given that we have to adopt a budget in September. Not ideas and suggestions that we can implement immediately to affect this year's budget. Or being considered at this time, that's not to say that we won't consider them. But when you look at perhaps, even if you take the idea about working with developers. You know, if we were to put that program in place, that's going to be, you know, some months down the road. It's not money that will come into the budget that we can help, uh, to balance for this year. So again, we're focusing on the immediate prices that we have and how we balance the budget. Now, I, in terms of providing you with all of the departments. I'm going to, uh, ask budget to weigh in on that. Because we provided the line-by-line item detail for all of the general fund departments. I didn't understand that the commissioners wanted, uh, non-general fund departments. We certainly will provide whatever information the commission want. But given that it's the general fund budget that we have to balance, that has been our focus. But you are privy to all of the budget information that we have. But, uh, Ms. McDermott, in the, uh, information that we sent out to the depart, to the commissioners. I thought it included all of the general fund departments. I went through it and looked at departments and I didn't know any that was missing. But again, I've looked at so much information, I certainly could have missed it. You're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yes, it was the general fund, I know it's a, uh, 250 pages, but that was all the general fund. The other funds, several of them, uh, we're balancing now. We still have some, uh, things to put in those budgets. But as far as the general fund, that was the big decision makers that, um, is what the discussion is today. But again, I will send it out again, uh, whatever you need, just let me know and I'll get it right to you.
Uh, Commissioner Lambert, you had a question?
Thanks, Mayor, um, Administrator Johnson, I was thinking about just our process in the past. And I understand it was your professional recommendation and I, you know, it sounds sound that we would change our process as it relates to the vacancy allowance. So my question is not about changing that process, my question is more about the hiring freeze that we're under now. Would that make any savings that we might have, have had in the past, or if we've been following that vacancy allowance? Would, would that make it, how, huh, I feel, sorry, I'm sorry, this is a convoluted question. Um, will we, will we project or have any savings by not filling positions? Or have we eliminated all of the need to hire or all of the ability to hire any position?
We, we have not eliminated the need, right now, the vacant positions are still part of the freeze. What we have done in terms of now with the personnel complement being fully funded. From the point that the budget is adopted and the freeze is lifted and the positions are filled. We will have some salary savings. So rather than going through the analysis of trying to calculate what that would be. And then implement the vacancy allowance. Uh, we're not doing that, we're leaving positions fully funded, we will have the salary savings to a certain extent. Which I think will serve us very well, given the potential impact on our unassigned fund balance. And if this continues in terms of COVID-19. And we have a hole in FY21's budget. We're going to need the salary savings from those positions. Because we are not going to be in a position to really have as much of salary savings next year. That we have this year, because we have cut out, you know, essentially all of the discretionary, uh, items within the budget.
Uh, thank you, I'm glad you understood my question and, and that is helpful information to know. Is that we may have some savings that may help us in a crunch later on in the year, but we are not banking on it.
No.
Okay, uh, a, a couple more, because I do want to get to the department, uh, directors and their presentation. Because I think it will, uh, be insightful as we begin comparing option A to option B. Uh, Commissioner Fox, you had a follow-up?
Thank you, uh, I just wanted to say that I, Ms. McDermott mentioned having sent us, I think, a 250-page general fund, um, document. I did not receive that, I apologize if it was sent to us and I didn't see it, but I would love it if you could, um, resend it if you don't mind, thank you.
I will do that.
Please get that out to her, Madam President, you had a question about personnel?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, so I just wanted to confirm, as we're looking at our budget, we had talked about a hiring freeze. There are times where I still see positions advertised on social media for the city of West Palm Beach. So question one was, are we still currently, excuse me, following that policy of a hiring freeze?
Yes, but again, as I, uh, said to the board, there are certain positions that we deem to be, uh, critical or strategic positions. So very few positions have been allowed to be advertised, primarily in police and fire.
Okay.
In terms of general funded positions.
Thank you, secondarily to that.
Also our economic director.
Secondarily to that, are those positions in the FY21 budget, do we still have positions allocated? On that same strategy, or do we have allocated positions, um, that are also department building positions? And things that, that would be good to have, but not those essential positions? So what kind of positions do we have funded for the FY21 budget? Is there an opportunity in there as well that we could say, even in those positions, that there is a hiring freeze for Q1? To make sure that you could take that vacancy rate, which would be an assured vacancy rate at that point? Because no one would be hired within that Q1 position to take that into a cost savings measure?
Uh, there, there, and, and I don't have the list of vacant, uh, positions. There are some, uh, a, a number of vacant, uh, positions. That, uh, on a weekly and in some cases, uh, daily basis, that, uh, directors, uh, reach out. And say they need to, uh, get approval to go ahead and, and post those positions. And I'll give you an example, uh, we have several positions in, uh, IT. And while IT is not a general funded position, it is the, uh, internal, uh, special revenue fund. It does impact the general fund because that budget is being spread out, uh, the other departments through the, uh, internal service fund charges. Uh, and I, and I have included their positions as part of the freeze. However, you know, I, once we get past an adopted budget, that's going to be one of the first departments where. You know, in consultation with the mayor, I am going to hopefully lift that freeze. Because you're talking about the city's, you know, security of its, uh, uh, infrastructure here, cybersecurity and all of that. So they are very, very concerned that they have these, uh, positions, uh, that they have under the freeze. uh, that they have under the freeze. Another example would be in public works with some of the sanitation, uh, positions. Those are positions that they need to have the feet on the street. So again, in consultation with the mayor, I will be looking at the various vacant positions, uh, and hopefully lifting, uh, the freeze because departments are really, really overstretched with trying to manage their operation and not have those critical, uh, positions filled. What I did have departments to do for every vacant position, they have submitted to me a, a mission critical analysis on why, uh, the freeze should be lifted. And I'm going to focus on that, again, once we get past, uh, the adopted budget. In terms of the vacancy allowance, or whatever that period is, uh, rather than spend time calculating that and dialing it into the budget, I'm treating it as that we will have some savings from that and it will just go to the bottom line of fund balance that would be available to help in the midst of fiscal year if we were to unfortunately incur another gap.
Administrator- Mayor, if I could just add-
Yes, Madam.
Just so folks understand that, yeah, even though there's a hiring freeze in place, you still have normal attrition that happens for the existing positions. So you're still going to have folks who retire or quit or whatever it may be. Uh, so, and we can't get to a point where we can't fill all those positions. And we, as Administrator Johnson said, a lot of these are critical. So as we move forward, there might be a freeze on existing vacancies, but you still have the normal attrition that happens.
All right. Listen, it's 11:30, so we got a couple of major, uh, topics to discuss. So I need, Ms. Johnson, I need you to tee up the department, the directors, uh, and, and have them present on, uh, how option B will affect their operations.
Well, Parks and Rec and Library are first out and their, their plan is on, uh, the, uh, 30% reduction. Uh, again, that will be scaled back to, uh, the 5%. So I'm going to ask, uh, Ms. Rockwell and, uh, Ms. Hathaway, if based on their 30% reduction plan, if they can talk through now how that will be scaled back, where it would be in the ballpark of the 5%.
And, and just, I, I would like the department directors to be as specific as they can about programs so that the, it, everyone who's here is hearing, uh, which programs would be adversely affected by the 5%. Who's going first, Leah, Ms. Rockwell? Okay, Leah.
Ms. Rockwell is first up.
Okay.
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor, City Administrator and Commissioners. Um, Leah Rockwell, Director of Parks and Recreation. So, um, with it not being a 30% and being a 5%, then we would see a reduction in, um, possibly some operating hours at the community centers and scaling back on some of the after-school and out-of-school programs, which would then be a, a much better scenario than the 30 because the 30 would have eliminated completely the after-school programs and our youth athletics programs. So we would still be able to operate those. We would just scale them back. I'd have to crunch some numbers to be able to present to you specifics at a 5%, but in just listening and looking at the numbers that I have in front of me, uh, it would be a much, um, more robust program that we could put back in place. Even with, um, the situation with COVID currently in place, we do have several parents that have been asking us about our after-school program because when the kids are done with virtual school at home, they're asking if we could still offer our after-school program where they could bring them to the community centers to at least have a sense of normalcy. So we would be able to bring that back in, but at a much, um, reduced rate of, uh, numbers of kids that we would be able to accept. So I, as much as I'd like to be able to give you specifics on a 5%, I can just tell you that we would reduce our hours of operations at some of our community centers, um, scale back some of the programming, but still be able to offer the programs that had been completely eliminated with the 30% reductions. I, I can't be more specific than that, um, on the spot, but that would be my best, um-
Yeah, that's fine.
Do me a favor. Uh, be, because get to Ms. Johnson's specifics. And Ms. Johnson, I need you to circulate that to the commissioners ASAP. The kind of scaling back, it, it's too soft. We're, we're making some very hard and fast number decisions here. And I need for everyone who's, uh, making a decision to understand specifically what we're talking about. Because that is what's going to govern how we go forward. Those are the emails we're going to receive. Those are the phone calls we're going to receive. If you don't have it today, get it to Ms. Johnson by end of business today, please. Ms. Johnson, please get that to the commissioners.
I, 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 I could. I, I did not have Leah and Ms. Rockwell and Ms. Hathaway to do the 5% because they had done the 30%. So that's my doing, I'll get the specifics.
All right, get specifics. Ms. Rockwell, you're in the same place. Let's go to those who have specifics because that's what we need to hear. It's 11:30 and, and that's the information we need to get in front of the commissioners ASAP.
Okay, the other departments-
Who has specific information soon, now?
The, the, the other departments have their 5% plan. Uh, engineering is next up on the 5%.
All right. Who's speaking from engineering?
Kevin Volbrecht.
What specific programs would be affected if you have to do a 5% growth of that?
Okay, well, let me get to this here, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so you can, can you see this, everybody? Okay.
Yes.
All right, so basically, um, what I have in engineering, we have a, um, three specific vacancies right now. Uh, a one CAD technician, a construction coordinator who just left a week or so ago. And then I have a CIP manager position. And the, um, um, salary plus benefits, uh, uh, costs of those are listed here. The, the total budget for, uh, the 30 personnel, the FTEs in the engineering department is $3,110,000. So a target 5% reduction would be a 1.5 FTE or in dollars, that would be $155,530. I looked at a number of different ways to achieve this, uh, through reclassifications of positions and combinations of furloughs. And, uh, it became very convoluted. And I, uh, would perhaps go back to that if necessary. But what I proposed here is that, um, we basically just, uh, get rid of the CAD tech position. That's one FTE worth $69,990. And eliminate the CIP manager position, which is another FTE for $112,000, which would bring a total reduction of two FTEs, which would be $182,000. And, um, that would be the equivalent of a 5.8%, 5.87% reduction. That would be 0.5 FTE more than the minimum that was asked for and an additional $27,000 more than the minimum that was asked for at a 5%. Uh, that $27,000 would represent an equivalent of 3.3 department staff furlough days, which is generally about $8100, uh, a day for the entire staff. Or 14, uh, management level one and two, uh, furlough days, which is roughly $1,930 per, per day for the four staff that we have in the engineering department, just for, um, perspective.
Just keep in mind, we're doing, we're doing reductions. We're not, we're not looking at furloughs.
Okay, I just wanted to throw that in. So the reductions, so the impact of eliminate, of implementing these reductions, eliminating the CAD tech vacancy would, uh, prevent us from hiring somebody that would help us to perform more, more work in-house rather than having to continue to rely on, uh, engineering consultants to do a lot of the design work. We were hoping that we would be able to bring some more of that in. Uh, we currently have two CAD techs, uh, still on staff. Um, and, uh, you know, they're able to perform the work that we need them to do, but we would like to be able to have an additional one to help out with that effort. But, uh, I'm willing to give that up in the sake of, uh, reducing the, uh, the costs. The CIP manager, um, that will affect the level of service by requiring other management staff to take the time away from their regular duties to maintain all of the data and the costs and the schedules for the CIP program. And of course, uh, preparing for the website updates on the, on the CIP website, which I think is very important to have. Um, I think we can manage this temporarily. Uh, we have been doing so with outside consultants, uh, uh, that are being paid for out of the capital budget, not out of the general fund budget. Um, but long-term, our long-term department goal, I think, would be affected in that we would like to have a, uh, some side of, some sort of a scaled down version of this position as sort of a management analyst that would be able to perform those functions. But for the time being, willing to forego this, uh, in order to, uh, achieve these cost savings.
Please keep in mind, we're talking staff reductions.
Yes, it is, a staff reduction. It's eliminating two positions within the department for a total of $182,000. And, um, I think this, uh, particular, uh, scenario would have the least impact on the current staff financially. Uh, and hopefully it could potentially offset future furloughs if they were going to be implemented. Uh, and whatever the, uh, potential, uh, impacts to level of service from that is to be determined. But, um, I think this would be, um, the most, uh, the best scenario to go with for the time being at this point in time. Okay?
Next up is, uh, Public Works. Public Works.
Can you share my screen?
Who's speaking from Public Works?
Mr. McDermott, are you there?
All right, sorry, I had it on mute. Can you guys see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, for us, 5% personnel budget cut. Um, our total personnel budget is 5.3 million. So scenario one would be a reduction of 264,000. Um, that's a total of four FTEs. Uh, fortunately, these are all vacant positions, um, for a total cost savings of 2,000, 254,840, 854,000.
Ms. McDermott, let me just ask a question. These are not the four that are already accounted for?
It kicked me out. I went back.
No, they're not.
I'm on mute.
That's, that's a good point, man. That's, these are not the, uh, we already did a couple other, um, reductions as well. So this is in addition to the others.
Okay, I want to make sure we're not double counting.
Thank you. So the, um, the four reductions, it's, there's one position in our administrative division, two positions in our street maintenance division and one position in our sanitation division. So the reduction in our ability to respond to sidewalk and curb service requests would, um, would be impacted our increased exposure to liability claims from safety hazards. Um, we would have a reduction in our ability to respond to natural disaster events. Um, two of the, uh, positions are members of our hurricane response teams or tropical storm response teams. Um, reduced financial audits, budget analysis, revenue deficit forecast and expenditure tracking. So that particular position is in our administrative, um, division. And we would have, this is the, uh, probably the biggest impact. It would be a reduced special pickups and cleanup of, of illegal dumping resulting in a significant revenue, revenue loss. Does anyone have any, uh, questions on those?
We're not going to take questions at this time. And commissioners, if you have questions for particular departments, write them down. I want to get through all the department presentations and then if necessary, we can go back through to make sure we get all the department presentations. I should have said that earlier, my apologies. Thank you, Josh. Next department. Ms. Johnson? You're on mute if you're trying to talk. I can't see you. Ms. Johnson, next department.
Can you guys hear me okay? This is Mario Guzman.
Yes.
Okay. Sharing the screen?
Let me see it.
All right, facilities management. Our budget's about 3 mil-, oh, good afternoon, everybody. Our budget's about $3 million. Our personnel budget of that is about $700,000. Uh, key point I wanted to mention, one of our HVAC mechanic positions that was vacant was already eliminated. Uh, so that leaves us with nine FTEs for the department, combination of supervisors, FTEs. You can see the 708 right there. Um, 5% reduction would be the removal of, the elimination of one FTE that's currently filled. So that would be a layoff for an employee. Uh, the number that, that would equate to $67,000. And like I, uh, stated earlier, that would be the layoff of a current position, which is the HVAC mechanic. And as far as our source reduction, uh, our service reduction impact, basically, we would have to contract out all of our AC services, uh, which it will, uh, reduce to budget for budget purposes, but our contracts will definitely increase as we outsource that aspect of the operation. I'm all done.
Thank you very much. Uh, next department, Ms. Johnson?
Hi, Mayor. Um, good morning, Mayor, City Commissioners, City Administrators, Jennifer Fariel. Um, I want to be very transparent and very quick with my thought process and how I came about the proposed budget cuts, uh, cuts. First, I assess obviously our capacity to administer 35-plus programs and/or projects or services that were currently being provided and that are currently being funded by eight different funding sources, either from federal or state appropriations. This includes any additional funding that we received for CARES Act response activities. Um, as you know, the regulatory requirements associated with that is they're extremely burdensome and really complicated. And unfortunately, the funding that we receive, um, from the state and the federal government to support staff costs is not sufficient to support all of those, uh, all of those functions. Then again, I also looked at how we balance our resources in terms of the delivery of homeless response efforts, which is obviously a huge need for our city. Um, all of the work that we need to adequately, uh, administer all of the city's real estate transactions. And then, of course, our community engagements efforts, which is also a huge, critical item to our administration and our commissioners. Um, in balancing all of these considerations, I propose the following 5% reductions, um, in an amount of $160,000. Efforts, and that would include the capacity to engage the community on citywide programs and activities. And then the other would be, um, one from program delivery and administration of HCD programs. This may administer, um, with this, we may lose the capacity to administer programs such as purchase assistance, uh, residential rehabilitation, rental assistance programs, and any capacity needed to comply with our programs.
Jennifer, how many FTEs, uh, would it be you went in and out? I, I didn't pick up.
I don't know if I can hear her either. I think we lost her.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Fay. I lost you right in the middle of it. And I couldn't share my slide with you. Um, I'm having difficulties, but it would be two, total FTEs for HCD.
Okay. All right.
And what's departments again? Because I, I, I couldn't hear. What department, I mean, what, 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 uh, functions?
It would be for community engagement efforts. And this would, uh, reduce our capacity to engage the community on different, um, citywide programs and activities and our program delivery and administration of HCD programs. So we could lose our capacity to administer purchase assistance programs, residential rehabilitation, rental assistance, and of course, our ability to monitor and comply with all of those programs.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next is development services.
Uh, and Mayor, I'm going to try to pull up my PowerPoint here if I can find it. And it's not popping up, poison not popping up.
Can you talk us through it?
Yeah, we were looking at two positions, um, in short. Um, here we go. Let me find this. I have it here, Fay. Let me find it. Okay. All right. So the good news is that through the end of July, we've collected 15.2 million in revenue. We've spent 13 million. Um, as a department, we're projecting by the end of the year, we're going to collect 2.2 million more than we spend. Um, the good news is that for fiscal year 20, we are expecting to receive- Um the good news is that for fiscal year twenty, we are expecting to receive nine hundred twenty-five thousand more than we budgeted, and we'll save on the expenditure side four hundred three thousand for savings of about one point three million dollars. Um you see the
Rick, 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 give me the cuts.
Okay, right here.
Services, please.
So we have four divisions, Mayor, we've got three that are funded out of the general fund, we've got our building permit is a special revenue fund. Forty of our hundred two people are funded through the general fund. What we are suggesting is two positions, a senior planner that oversees works in cop planning is recommended to be eliminated at a cost of eighty-nine thousand and a business tax code officer at a cost of seventy-one thousand for a total of a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Um the impact that's gonna have, certainly the work that's done by the cop planners, gonna have to be shared with the other planners. And then the business tax officer is responsible for securing BTRs that are not received throughout the year. That responsibility is going to be left with the one full-time BTR officer we have, and that finding that additional um revenue is gonna have to be shared with the fourteen code officers that we have. So again, we're looking at a hundred sixty-one thousand fifty dollars for the two positions.
All right, and and their services will be split between their their counterparts?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Next, Ms. Johnson.
City Attorney.
Ms. Rothenberg? Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, everyone, Commission and Mayor Administrator Johnson. Um in order for the City Attorney's Office to create a five percent reduction of Personnel Services, it would require the elimination of one of um the senior assistant city attorney positions within the budget. And from the procurement budget, it would require the elimination of a contract specialist position. The personnel budget for the City Attorney's Office is uh two million nine fourteen one oh seven. The budgeted position would be one hundred and thirty-seven dollars two hundred and six. Uh as for the procurement position, the budgeted amount is eight hundred and four thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars for all personnel. The position that would um is currently frozen from a, it's in a froze position uh for a retired contract specialist, the uh funded amount for that position is seventy-one thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars. During the fiscal year eighteen nineteen, the City Attorney's Office processed two hundred and eighty-three new matters per month. We don't really have programs, but we have services, and those services impact all of the various departments across the city. So we routinely see year over year an increase in the number of new matters that this office processes. Uh additionally, because of the new parks bond and other cop capital improvement projects that are being currently processed, we anticipate an uptick fiscal year twenty twenty-one of items that will have to be processed through uh both the procurement and the City Attorney's Office. The procurement div- division was merged with the City Attorney's Office in October of twenty nineteen. Um it was our intent and part of the merger of those two departments was to increase effi- efficiencies. And as part of that, it's our intent to restructure and reorganize the department that creates those efficiencies and processing procurement work uh for the city. Currently, uh procurements take between nine to twelve months from publication of the solicitation to execution of a contract. A reduction of the procurement position and the the corresponding senior uh assistant city attorney position will impact the planned reorganization. It will inhibit the ability to more efficiently handle solicitations, including the increased um capital improvement projects and bond funded projects coming online next year. Things such as park improvements and utility projects. Elimination of the transactional attorney position has future impacts on our office's ability to effectively and efficiently assist with procurements and process contracts, as well as handle the large real estate and development contracts. It will also impact contract administration abilities. Prompt and efficient handling of solicitations benefits many local businesses, including small businesses and MWBEs that the city work um that work for the city at this time. The efficient processing of contracts, capital improvements and bond projects uh benefits the public by providing quality of life conditions and of providing job opportunities for local residents. Reduced staffing levels also impacts our assistance uh to help other departments in administering contracts and to help ensure that the city properly contracts for all needed services. A reduced staff will likely reduce the level of services um currently provided by this office that we've worked long and hard to uh improve over time and hope that we've done a a good job at that. We used to be referred to as uh being lost in the black hole um in the City Attorney's Office, and that is something of the past we would hate to have to go back to. We also uh would envision an excessive amount uh increase in the workload for the existing staff that can have an impact on morale and retention of lawyers here in the office.
Hey, Mayor, can we move on?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, the next one is uh Finance, Mr. Parks.
Hey, good morning again. Uh first of all, I want to preface this with uh to to bring to your attention, we did do uh two hundred thousand dollars in cuts uh just being good stewards of the public's money prior to this uh pandemic. And part of that was uh two FTEs uh which we got through temporary agencies, and that those are really uh FTEs that we needed, uh they process our accounts payable checks, uh which as uh Attorney Rothenberg mentioned, we have increased activity due to all of the projects that are coming online, so we're, we will be missing those two FTEs. Uh but the hope was that we would have a software that would help us through this, uh so that, I just wanted to note that. Uh we have a a personnel budget of about three point two million dollars. A five percent cut would be right around a hundred sixty-three thousand dollars. What we're looking at is cutting two and a half FTEs. The first would be an accounting position. We have a segment of our department which is focused on HCD, CRA, and grants. And in that department, at this moment, we have a manager and an accounting clerk. The accounting position uh would uh supplement uh working with the grants, HCD, COVID nineteen, all of those type of uh disasters, and I want you to understand that some hurricanes are on the books for ten, fifteen years. So we're still dealing with hurricanes from many years ago. So without the accounting position, we wouldn't have the supplemental support to work and get those reimbursements as quickly as we could. And again, they will be working with CRA and HCD. Uh with CRA with a new executive director, again, that'll require a little more work, uh just as a learning curve is uh met. The second full-time position would be our administrative research analyst. And what that is, is our financial systems position. Right now, we have one person who is uh handling all of the financial system work within the city. So that means for Oracle, uh which is the financial accounting system for the entire city, for our budget system, uh for investments, for utility billing, for every electronic uh financial system there is in the city, we have one person. So if that one person, if something happens to that person, we're not in a good place. So the position that we are removing would be the backup to that particular position. The third position is, and we're taking a half of that, uh we have a payroll coordinator. And once again, we have a seventeen hundred, roughly seventeen hundred employees, uh two checks per month at minimum, uh we're cutting thousands of payroll checks on a yearly basis. And at this point, we have one person in that position. So once again, without that backup, uh we would not have someone who could continue that process. And uh payroll is very important, so uh we definitely need that position. So that those are our two and a half FTEs.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Uh moving on, HR, Human Resources. Mr. Rodriguez.
Good afternoon, uh Mayor Commissioners, Administrators, Jose Rodriguez, Chief Human Resources Officer. The Human Resources Department Personnel Budget is roughly two point two million dollars. Um so a five percent cut would require us to reduce our FTE contingent from twenty-two full-time employees in Human Resources down to twenty. Um in order to achieve that, uh one of the positions um that we would be recommending um to eliminate would be the clerical assistant position, we only have one clerical assistant in Human Resources. So that position is currently vacant right now because of an internal promotion, but we would propose removing that from the budget from the list of currently frozen positions that were gonna be budgeted next year. Um and with the the service impact for that would be that the this position provides assistance to members of the public and employees when they go to HR, for example, with assistance uh with applying uh elic uh online for jobs with the city, answers basic questions that employees or the members of the public may have when other members of Human Resources are not available to meet with them. So would the impact will be that those uh that assistance will be either delayed or not available uh uh immediately when someone goes to the HR um front desk. The second position that we are looking um at would be a reduction in our Employee Relations Division, which currently has two employees for all uh to support um managers and employees and the union representatives that need assistance from Human Resources across the city. We would reduce that position uh from that division from two to one. That would require the reduction of an actual person, because both positions are currently um have active uh employees in them, and the service impact there would be very similar, it it would be customer service oriented. Uh when a manager has a performance issue or needs assistance with an employee issue, or an employee has an issue that they're concerned with, or a union member or one of the union representatives has a labor relations issue, um it will reduce um the the turnaround time where the availability of staff to manage um that caseload. Just to, you know, put into perspective, we currently right now have over fifteen employee relations cases um that um that are being addressed by these two representatives, so that would impact um you know, that ability, and and I'll put an asterisk on that, because there is the possibility that it may not be that position and another position depending on where the operational cuts uh wind up, as Ms. Johnson, our city administrator, pointed out, in some areas, the operational cuts have been, you know, down to the bone. So we have done, we have had cuts um to realize savings in the Training Division. But if those cuts um if are, you know, stay the way that they are, it may be that we may decide to go in a different direction in terms of the FTE. If we're not offering as much training, um and if we go with that alternate um position when the budget is finalized, then it would be reducing that division from two trainers to one trainer. But right now, it's likely that it'll be Employee Relations and the Clerical Assistant Position.
Okay, next, Ms. Johnson. Thank you.
Communications?
The Mayor's Office.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners and City Administrator Johnson. This is Kathleen Walter, Director of Communications in the Office of Mayor James. I'm joining you via the phone this morning. Um thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you about the proposed five percent Personnel Services Reduction Plan for Communications and Marketing. The current budget for Personnel Services salaries and benefits for Communications and Marketing is five hundred eighty-one thousand one hundred sixty-one dollars. This covers six FTEs and one part-time position, which is currently vacant, and that is Division Zero Coordinator Position. To achieve a five percent cut, we are looking at a target reduction of twenty-nine thousand dollars. I propose to continue temporary freeze on the position of Vision Zero Coordinator, a position with an annual salary of forty-eight thousand one hundred thirty-one dollars, or a savings of about eight point two percent. Why do I make this recommendation? There are three key reasons. One, there would be no layoffs to Communications and Marketing. Two, there would be no disruption to current, no major disruption to current operations of Communications and Marketing. And three, the number itself in terms of employee salaries gets us closest to our five percent target. I want to speak real quickly about Vision Zero. As you know, Commission unanimously passed the adoption of this program about two years ago. This is a recommendation that came out of the Mobility Study. The Vision Zero Coordinator uh was a contractual position working with Communications, Engineering, and Police. Funding for that contractual position has expired, so currently, there is no one working in this role at this time. The part-time coordinator position was in the process of being requisitioned. And um of course, as you would imagine, this proposal would have an impact to Vision Zero. But I also have a proposal about how we could move forward. One, the education component, that could be undertaken by Communications and Marketing on a limited temporary basis. The internal engagement that is uh key to Vision Zero being a success, communications can be uh can play a role in facilitating the meetings between Police, Engineering, and Communication to make sure that this program is sustained. Um engagement externally, this would have to be scaled back um no matter what, and of course, this would make the most sense during COVID nineteen. Um I do wish to emphasize that this is a sustainable approach for the short term, but not for the long term, as it will have an impact to the workloads of the current communication staff. That is my proposal, and I thank you for the consideration.
Ms. Walter, I'm gonna ask you to uh relook at your proposal. It is to be a reduction, not a continuation of the freeze in the position. That's where we are with trying to balance this budget, we're looking for reductions.
All right, I will work on that, and I will circle back with another proposal.
Thank you. Uh next up is uh Mr. Hayden. Are you there?
Address, I'm I'm actually gonna address the EEO um office, because we are doing a re-classification with the uh Office of Economic Development. And that's going to be actually reclassified. That will allow for about a thirty thousand dollar savings for that position, which will actually get us a little bit over the five percent reduction. And I I don't foresee, actually, I foresee an increase in productivity in that uh within those both departments. Services, or excuse me, administrative services available for the economic development uh component of it, which we didn't have in the past, we only had one person who was really doing all of economic development. This will allow us to really have greater efficiencies and provide some administrative support for that function.
So are you saying a a reduction in that salary will meet your five percent, you don't have to reduce headcount?
Correct. It's a small, it's only a three-person department, so.
All right, and then I want to also add in terms of the um